Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education September 1st, 2020 Board Meeting. We would like to begin with an invocation. And tonight, we have Chaplain Hank Parker from Union County Sheriff Office here with us. Thank you.
Father, we thank you for this day, for our many blessings, for our health and our strength. And Father, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom, God, that you would grant us the ability tonight to make the decisions that is needed, God, to continue to further, Lord, the decisions that need to be made to help this county, Lord, to be all it could ever be, to be pleasing unto you, and God, to continue to help us be unified, and, Lord, to be that county, Father, that drew us all to this place. And we thank you for all that you do for us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much for being with us tonight. And Board members, I just want to let you know that Chaplain Vic Weaver, his wife is having a procedure tonight, if you'll keep them in your thoughts and prayers. But we sure do appreciate having you here with us tonight in his absence. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We miss our ROTC students.
I know.
Okay, now we have approval of the agenda. We have some additions. Under 5B, under the consent agenda, it should say Personnel Agenda and Addendum. We need to add as K, Closed Session Discussions Regarding HEMBY Roofing Bid and Parkwood High School Roofing Bid. And then, before, after Curriculum Update, I'd like to do a Finance Committee update. Are there any other changes to the Agenda Board?
I move that we approve the amended Agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will now have the John H. Crowder Service Award. Mrs. Sturdevent, thank you.
Our student is not here, so I will be reading from my seat. The late, can you hear me okay? All right, there's usually a problem with my voice. The late John H. Crowder spent more than 30 years serving the children of Union County. As a living tribute to him and his legacy, the Union County Board of Education awards the John H. Crowder Service Award every month to an outstanding high school student who makes a difference in their school and community. Students who receive this award are not only academically successful, but also have an established history of community service. Due to the social distancing guidelines, the award winner will not be here in person. But we recognize our students with a special online tribute that can be accessed from the UCPS website and social media. Tonight, we award the John H. Crowder Service Award for September 2020 to a senior from Piedmont High School who believes in giving his time. During the summer, Hudson Shank helped rising ninth graders and new students transition to the school. He and a few other students created a video tour of the school so incoming students could get a visual idea of the campus layout. When school started this year, despite the fact he was only required to be in school one day a week, Hudson spent every day of the first week showing students where their classes were. He walked around campus to make sure new students knew how to get to their classes. Now, the senior has started a program to provide volunteer virtual tutoring for students and families who need additional support in any subject area working through courses in this new digital learning experience. Hudson also takes the time to focus on his education with a 4.6 GPA. I know, right? He's been a member of the National Honor Society in his junior and senior years, and he has also received, I'm sorry, and he's also involved in school activities. He's currently the president of Student Government and a captain of the Piedmont Swim Team. Hudson is an active member of the LEO Club and Recycling Club on campus. The 17-year-old also gives of his time to the community. He volunteers every year with United Way Day of Caring. Hudson is a member of several community organizations such as Unified Champion Schools, assisting with events such as Special Olympics, Victory Junction by helping prepare for their annual camps. Hudson, we appreciate your unselfishness and how much you care. Because of that, the Board of Education is proud to recognize Hudson Shank as the September 2020 recipient of the John H. Crowder Service Award. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Sturdevent. And we miss having our students here with us, too. Okay, that brings us to public comments. Thirty minutes has been allotted for public comments. Community members wishing to speak during public comments should state their name, address, and phone number prior to making other comments. The Board will not hear in open session complaints about the performance of school personnel, personnel issues, or confidential student issues. Individuals may address the Board for a maximum of three minutes. Any person who is appointed representative for a group may address the Board for five minutes. Should a community member wish to seek information or share items that may not be shared during public comments, our staff are available to address your concerns or provide information. Dr. Brad Breedlove, Chief Academic Officer, Jared McCraw, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, are here to assist. The first name we have is David Willis.
Is that better? Let me start over. My name's David Willis. I live at 1004 Schenectock Lane, Marvin, North Carolina, 28173, phone number 704-843-9303. I am a parent of children in the Marvin Cluster. I have children ranging from four to 13, so I've seen how this pandemic has impacted them and so many other children over the last six months. You know, six months ago, we had no idea what to expect. We had no idea how serious this was going to be. You know, we did the proper things. We took precautions. We followed the guidelines. We isolated ourselves. We, you know, used common sense in making the decisions that we were making to protect our children, our families, and those around us. But here we are, six months later, and we know a whole lot more. I'm also the owner and operator of a preschool that has not closed a single day during that six months. Our staff, our families, our children have done the right things. You know, we have not had a single case of COVID, thank God, and, you know, we've done the same things that our school systems now are doing. We've proven that we can do two things at once. We can educate and love and nurture these children, and we can keep our staff and our families safe at the same time. And, you know, as we've seen our school systems fight with some of these same decisions and what we're looking at, we know the struggle that you faced. We know how hard it's been to make some of these decisions and looking at what's best for the children, and that's why we're all here. Everyone in this room tonight, everyone involved with the school system is here for our children. Every major medical organization in the country states very clearly that it's in the best interest of our children to be back in school, learning in person. The social-emotional impact of not being in school, especially for our younger ones, K through 3, our EC children, it's paramount that they be back in that environment and given the opportunity to learn and be around their peers in person. You know, it can't be understated what the impacts of that are. So, one, I want to say thank you for opening, trying to do the best we can for our students and given the, you know, the honorist guidelines from our governor, and in trying to get our students back into school as much as possible. We want to encourage you to continue to push as much as we can to allow these children to be back in school where they need to be. We know the youngest children coming out of third grade, what their reading scores indicate as they go through life. There's a direct correlation between those reading scores and what happens to them in life. And we cannot effectively teach and train and help those children get to where they need to be in a full, remote environment. You know, for our teachers that are out there, our school administrators, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, our bus drivers, thank God for you. For all of those folks out there every day, the custodians who are working hard to keep the schools clean, thank you. We see you, and we appreciate you, and your community is behind you. For those that, you know, look at our students this year and what they're going to learn, the most important thing our students are going to learn this year is how to deal with adversity. It's not math, or science, or literature. They're looking at us every day, and what lesson are they learning from us?
Thank you.
We need to teach them courage and how to deal with adversity going forward. So, thank you, and thank you for being there for our children.
Thank you very much. The next person I have is Dell Archer.
My name is Dellwyn, but I go by Dell with my friends, so y'all can call me Dell. I live at 6618 Newman Road in Waxaw, near Jars. My number is 214-625-3369. I want to thank 68th North Carolina Congressional District Candidate David Willis for helping get me off my blessed assurance to be here tonight. And whatever you're paying down in Malarky, it ain't enough. I'm honored to speak before you. Let the words of my mouth and meditation of my heart be acceptable in your sight, my rock and my redeemer. Thank you for your leadership in allowing our students to return to class. Educators have one of the highest callings. Good educators are usually not in it for the money. I am blessed with many educators in my immediate family, so I know some of your challenges quite well. I confess and repent of my lack of prayer and encouragement for you and our Union County You not only have a high calling, but an immense responsibility before God. Whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to stumble would be better for him to have a heavy millstone hung around his neck and be drowned in the depth of the sea. Therefore, please never include the 1619 Project in our curriculum. Please zealously protect our students from all improper manipulation and inappropriate bias towards political and religious ideologies in the classroom. Please passionately promote traditional American values, especially daily reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, including the words "under God," along with proper respect and etiquette for Old Glory. I have tremendous respect for educators, which made Sunday, August 16th, the behavior there totally unacceptable in a large Waxaw neighborhood, and it was shocking and appalling to me. I encourage you as our Board to do all you can to support our teachers and staff so that they never fall prey to that temptation for such ignorant and extremely unhelpful efforts again. Please do whatever you can do, taking both positive and negative actions toward them as needed, to encourage them to properly follow their trained command with their concerns and issues, and not disrupt our wonderful way of life in Union County. When we adults fail so horribly and visibly, what happened at Weddington High School early Monday morning should not be surprising. I pray that I will never again hear of, or God forbid, personally witness, similar behavior by our beloved Union County educators. Thank you for your time, attention, and prayerful consideration. I'm thankful for your leadership and will do my best to faithfully uphold y'all. In prayer.
Thank you very much. The next name we have is Jennifer Willett, if she's here. It does not appear that she is here, so Claudia Sandoval has asked to speak in her place.
Is this on? Okay. I just want to be clear, I don't know who Jennifer is, so I'm not really speaking in her place, I'm just speaking for me. So, good evening. Thank you, Board and Dr. Houlihan, for your time tonight. My name is Dr. Claudia Sandoval. I live at 202 Abbotsbury Court, Waxaw, North Carolina. My phone number is 704-993-6854. I have high school seniors and a second grader, and this will be our sixth year with Union County Public Schools. Throughout these years, I've trusted their educators and been thankful for them going above and beyond for my children. So, I trust our educators when I hear they're exhausted. And Mrs. Helm summarized it perfectly when at last week's Curriculum Committee meeting, she stated, "Teachers feel like it's the end of the school year instead of the beginning." From what I've heard, stress is coming from balancing face-to-face, remote, and virtual learning, concerns that one day a week in-person instruction is not addressing the needs of students, and health and safety concerns for students, teachers, and staff. In last week's Curriculum Committee meeting, I was encouraged to hear Dr. Houlihan protecting teachers' strategies to balance mixed instructional demands. I'm glad there's awareness that as in-person days increase, teachers lose strategies to balance face-to-face, remote, and virtual instruction, and that can unintentionally affect the quality of instruction. I'm also grateful that UCPS has established tiers for prioritizing more face-to-face instruction for our most vulnerable students, and would like to see UCPS publish any and all tiers being considered for more in-person days. Trust is earned based on qualities like transparency and accountability. The biggest gap in transparency I see today is the lack of metrics on how UCPS is determining whether or not to close schools with positive COVID cases. As of last week, nine schools in our county had COVID-19 cases, but only two closed. Cases are expected, but unclear decision-making increases fear and anxiety. Determining school closures on a case-by-case basis doesn't mean the county should be devoid of metrics or rubric for decision-making. Public health and operation metrics are best practices for mitigating infectious disease risks. Additionally, deciding to increase face-to-face instructional days solely off attendance is an insufficient metric during a pandemic. As you have a partnership with the Public Health Department, there should be more transparency into their recommendations and how your decisions are made. It's fair for students, parents, and teachers to know the threshold for school closure, whether we have any gaps in PPE, or what factors could put our district into Plan C. And if Plan C will never be an option unless the governor mandates it, then just state that. "We can pour from an empty vessel," "we can't pour from an empty vessel," was the message shared by U-Mater and UCPS last week. And as I'm helping my second grader, we read, "Have you filled a bucket today?" And I realized how many parents and teachers are running on empty, as I'm sure you likely are, too. And the valuable lesson I learned in this book is that if you fill someone else's bucket, you fill yours, too. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all your efforts.
The next person we have is Sharon Cross.
Sharon Cross, 7416 Mockingbird Lane, Waxaw, North Carolina, 28173, 704-491-7136. I'm a 38-year veteran, retired teacher from Union County Public School System. My husband is a retired educator and administrator and is currently still working for Union County Public Schools as a driver's education teacher. My children went to Union County Public Schools, graduated with honors, and are now currently employed in the medical field. I have two older grandchildren who graduated and are working successfully, and I have two younger grandchildren who are currently in elementary and middle school, so we run the gamut there. I'm extremely proud of my service to Union County, and I congratulate all teachers who are teaching today. It is not easy for you. For the administrators and the Board, I want to thank you for your efforts. You're here because you're uniquely qualified, and I appreciate everything that you're doing. For teachers out there, it is not easy. However, I know because our teachers are smart, creative, and have a heart for their students that we will succeed even through this COVID season. Teachers of Union County have been gifted with the tools of success, with online workshops. They've been provided with every tool in order to administer their instruction through the in-class and online learning. It's not ideal for students because they don't get immediate feedback. Some of them are going to fall through the cracks. They are going to not get what they need because of the nuances of virtual learning. Some of them aren't organized, some of them aren't motivated, and many do not have the support system at home that they need. I've spoken to many teachers and students in the last two weeks leading up to this meeting. I understand for myself that the burden is on the teachers to make this work. I want to highlight two teachers, if I may. I spoke to Miranda Thomas at Western Union Elementary School. She is a first-grade teacher. I was allowed to go to her classroom. It was a beautiful classroom, and while I was there, she showed me what she is doing. She showed me the format for the learning curriculum. Key among her strategies is live instruction. Am I over? But let me just say one other thing. The other person I wanted to mention is Laura Lalone at Weddington High School, a math teacher who also uses live instruction. I feel like that is the key. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person we have is Eric Gabriel.
My name's Eric Gabriel. My address, 7900 Roushen Court. My phone number is 704-242-5890. I have two kids. They actually grew up in Korea. We moved here a couple of years ago for, because you guys are here, creating a great public school system. I'm originally from Portland, Oregon. It's very, you know what's going on there, and there's a reason why we're here, because we have a different mindset here, very conservative mindset, very family-centric mindset, faith-based mindset. I'm really happy that the Chaplain prayed today. There's, when I was a little child, that was all gone out of the school system. In God, it was ripped out, and that's not why I'm here today. My daughter told me something this evening. She was, she basically said, "I'm more afraid of living a sad life that's safe than living a happy life with a little bit of danger." And that was her message to me, and when my kids come home from school, they're one day a week, that's what they say. And they tell me that, you know, the kids are on their cell phones, and they can't communicate with other kids because they're distanced in masks, and I understand, we can't control the things in the air. We can't control God's will for when He wants to take us and when He wants to leave us here. But we do have the ability to experience life and give people the opportunities to go and experience life the way that we all want it to be experienced. And that just hit my heart real deep when my daughter said that, and I see my son's struggle as well, and there are other kids that they talk about, the lack of social interaction because of what's happening. And we have to really try to push these kids to come together instead of be on their phones and be on their computers, because my fear is that they won't be able to connect. Like, when I walked in here, everyone was talking. I know that when they're going to school, they're not talking. In those moments where they're waiting for the bus, they're sitting there looking at their phones, because that's where they're comfortable. And that's not where relationship is, and that's not where we gain the connection and the meaning in life. So, I guess that's all I really wanted to say. Just keep in mind, when you're making your decisions, don't be afraid of the danger and the sadness of all these restrictions, but try to focus on giving them the best life and the joy that comes with all of that.
Thank you very much. Okay, Michael Hicks.
My name is Michael Hicks. I am, I live at 1009 Secret Garden Court, Indian Trail, North Carolina, 28079. My telephone number is 704-773-9435. And I didn't come with anything prepared. I want to speak to you from the heart. I want to thank the School Board, and I want to thank Dr. Houlihan for at least letting me get back in the classroom. It's an honor to be in that classroom. I spent, this is my 14th year of teaching. I'm a, what's known as a lateral entry teacher. I was in corporate America. I got kind of burned out, started coaching a Pop Warner football team, little boys. I'd never coached, they'd never played, and I fell in love with it. We didn't win one game at all. I fell in love with it, and it just, it was an epiphany at 39. I said, "You know what? I'm going to look into being a teacher. I want to go in the classroom, and I want to get back." I loved it so much that I did, I went through CMS, and I went through their program, and I taught in CMS, I taught in Combaris County. This is a fantastic school system. It truly is. And, you know, just being back in, this is, I got to tell you, this has been the hardest year I've ever had to teach. It is extremely hard. And I'll tell you why. It's because I don't have the kids in the classroom with me. I can't tell you how many great memories I have with these children that have gone on for 14 years now, have gone on to great things in life. They've become managers, they've become great successes in life, and I like to think at least I kind of planted a little seed in their minds that germinated and grew and maybe made them what they are today. Because I know I had some teachers, when I was in high school, did the same thing for me. I have the greatest job on the face of the planet. No, it doesn't pay the greatest. So what? I used to say, when I was in corporate America, you can pay yourself, I mean, some people take jobs and they pay themselves to be miserable. I'm not miserable in my classroom. I love being in the classroom. The hardest thing for me is now seeing two or three kids in the class, and that's it, and the rest online. I asked them the other day, and I'll tell you from the front lines, I asked them, I said, "How many like this?" They said, "We're very thankful to be back in school. It's, we want to be back full-time. We want to be back to normal life." Now, that's something we can't control, but I want to really take the time here to commend all of you for the brave decision of reopening schools, at least this little, I'll take this little bit. I can get 25% with them. I love it, just that little bit. I'm hoping it would become normal again, and maybe 50%, and then 75% down the road. But I need them. They need me, and I need them. I can see in their eyes how they feel that they're, you know, they just, there's a light that's not burning as bright as it used to. It's starting to come back, but I feel like they're really struggling. It's starting to come back, but I feel like they're really struggling with not being there the whole time. I can just sense it, it just feels different. But there again, I talked to educators and friends of mine in CMS, and I talked to them in Combaris County that are going remote, and they just, there's all kinds of issues going on, and they're depressed about that. I just really thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing me to go back in the classroom. This is where I truly belong, not in the house in front of a computer, but with kids, being an educator, trying to do the best I can for them, and being where I want, I mean, in the classroom with them. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and I'm just going to take the liberty now to thank you for what you do. Thank you for being one of our teachers. Thank you for being here tonight. Pedro Morey.
Good evening, everyone. Let me just take a moment to thank everybody in this room for being here. It shows you're coming out of your way for the kids, especially I want to thank the board, and everybody's made a comment here. My name is Pedro Morey. I live at 8007 Denholm Drive in Waxaw. My phone number is 828-610-5421. As many of you know, I'm a current commissioner of Town of Waxaw. I'm not here in that capacity tonight. I am, I'm not speaking on their behalf. I am here tonight as a concerned parent. My road into politics started with me becoming involved at my daughter's school. I have two daughters, only one's at school yet. She's in the second grade management program. I'm a Kensingtonite dad and a current site-based parent at Kensington Elementary. And during my time in Kensington, I've had the pleasure of working with great staff and amazing parents. Right now, I want to recognize them also because they have taken on a tremendous role. So recently, I've had that pleasure of working with that great staff of parents, and they all tend to call Kensington their home. That's the, that's the sort of family that we've established there, and not just there, but in a lot of schools here in Union County. Recently, the pandemic that has befallen us has caused us to think the way, to rethink the way we as parents think about our schools and how we can achieve our kids' educational goals. And as we venture down this road of education, many of the things that we thought we already knew about education became solidified, and some things unfortunately changed. We now see teachers in a clear light that we might have, we might not have seen before. We understand a little bit better what they go through on a daily basis. And the issues that always concerned us before COVID-19, such as class size, school supplies, nutrition, and technology are now more than ever critical and are making it through these turbulent times. Those issues are a given, though. I suspect that we will be here advocating for them long after tonight's discussion. One thing, however, that neither we nor our kids should have to worry about is the need to spend time on politics and its effect on our kids' education in the classroom. Lately, for various reasons, politics have entered our education system in a way more than ever before. Politics and social agendas have entered a system which is supposed to teach our students how to think. It's not supposed to teach them what to think. The ugliness of our political battles has spilled over into our, I'm sorry, the ugliness of our political battles has spilled over into what should be considered a safe zone for young, impressionable minds, instead of children are witnessing the hate displayed on television, at our schools, and even in our local streets. I'm not here for debate on free speech. I'm not here for debate on social issues. What I am here for is to implore you and your staff, teachers and parents, to keep politics out of our classrooms. Then just, the agenda's being pushed by activists manifesting themselves in our schools via actions being taken by those being entrusted sometimes with the education of our children. As our Board of Education, you as our Board of Education have the ability to ensure that our classrooms are free of the biased politics and hurtful agendas some seek to manifest. You also have the ability to advocate for these things on a higher and larger level. Take the stand that we as parents need you to take. Be the leaders we need you to be. Let's get back to big sales and football games and leave the politics until politicians. Keep our classrooms a learning environment and not a political arena. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks like we might have a group here. Terry Nolan Range, Mary DeGatano, and Tracy Olson.
Hi, Tracy Olson, 122 Prim Rose Way, Waxaw, 28173-704-2928151. Thank you for letting me speak today, and thank you for all of your hard work. It doesn't go unseen. I was a teacher myself for many years, and I am a mom to three, if I don't say so myself, beautiful boys, who are eight, six, and two. One of my sons was born with a 70 and 90% hearing respective loss in both ears. This led to an auditory processing disorder and other learning disabilities that he struggles with to this day. Now, thank God, my son is resilient and has a deep, deep want to learn because his struggles from a young age have made his learning very difficult. Although surgery has fixed his ear problems, he will live with these learning disabilities for the rest of his life. He has spent his entire elementary school career playing catch-up and just trying to maintain staying there. From being below grade level to almost being held back and countless other struggles, his IEP was essential to helping him get to where he is and to help him stay there. I cannot imagine what he would look like without his IEP. I could cry. The in-person and hands-on help from his amazing teachers is what he has relied on to not only fully understand the material, but to grasp it enough that he can retain it. Thousands of children are like my son. A majority of children are not made to learn from a screen, but from hands-on and tangible help. How is my son, who can hardly understand something sometimes, supposed to ask a question to a computer screen that doesn't talk back to him? I worry for my kindergartner this year, who is trying to learn to read and write and grow socially from a computer. The sadness in his eyes every day is unbearable. Both of my boys have cried more honestly in the last two weeks than they have in months. They are frustrated, sad, disappointed, and lonely. Children with an IEP and children without one need to be learning from within a classroom, able to ask questions, able to see how their peers are learning. I can speak on behalf of most moms. We are simply not enough, and that is a very hard fact for me to admit. I pride myself on being enough for my babies, and in this instance, I am not. I have one son who has come so far only to watch him start to slip away, and another who is five years old and expected to start his education by staring at things he doesn't understand on a screen. Please help these kids get back into the classroom so those kids with an IEP and even those without have a chance, not only at an education, but a successful one. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you again for allowing us to be here. My name is Mary DeGatano. I live at 126 Prim Rose Way in Waxaw. My phone number is 704-256-1449. I have four children, three different schools, one a freshman at Cuthbertson, two at CMS, a seventh grader and a sixth grader, and a third grader at Kensington. My husband lives out of state for work, so I'm pretty much a single parent. All four of my kids would prefer to be in-person, learning face-to-face. My freshman and sixth grader are both in honors classes. They actually can handle the face, the online learning, but it's not their preference. My seventh grader, on the other hand, struggles more with school. When he can't figure things out, he gets very frustrated. On the third day of virtual learning, we go to school on Monday, so we are taking advantage of that one-day-a-week, thank God. He came home and he got so frustrated that he punched his Chromebook. It doesn't work anymore. That's another story. But his reaction after what he did, punching it with his frustration, he started pulling his hair, calling himself an idiot, stupid. I've never seen him act like that before. It was very heart-wrenching for a mom. My sixth grader stepped in and gave him a hug and comforted him and told him he wasn't those things. It was the worst day ever. This last week, and this week is going much better. He is still failing math at this point. He needs, he needs that face-to-face interaction with his teachers. His teachers are great, and then they're helping him out. I've been communicating with them as well. My third grader is doing okay. I feel like the teachers are doing their best, but the curriculum that they're getting as a third grader is just not enough. They just need to be in the classroom. Again, I do appreciate that one-day-a-week. Again, my ninth graders and sixth graders are very active in sports. If those get taken away, I don't know what their morale will be. They're honors students now because they know they have to have good grades to play sports, so I know their morale will definitely decrease if something happens with sports. So I pray every day that virtual learning eventually does go away and that you give them opportunity to go at least 50% or by the end of the school year, five days a week, that would be great. Thank you again.
Is there any time to reel later for just? Terry Nolan Range, 129 Prim Rose Way, Waxaw. I have two children, high school and middle school. My comments today are about fundamental rights and the need for Union County families to have the choice around campus education. The right to a free and equal education is guaranteed to us in the U.S. Constitution and through the 14th Amendment. The burden of proof for education relies upon the institution or those who prevent the education therefore, and not the families who need to be in the systems. And yet, with the onset of COVID-19 pandemic, has come the abandonment of these constitutional guaranteed rights. The alternatives are not equal, and not to the standard nor between groups of children. If there's any extra time to reel, I would grab it.
I apologize. So it was kind of, to have three people in one time slot was tough, but if you would email your comments to the board, I promise you we'll read them. Just give us an email. Thank you. Patricia Kowalski.
My name is Patricia Kowalski. I live at 1311 Skyler Drive in Waxaw, North Carolina, 28173. My phone number is 908-705-4181. Thank you for letting me talk tonight. I just wanted to echo some of the thoughts that others had had, that we are returning to school under truly unique circumstances, and while we are doing our best to comply with the current status of the governor's orders, executive order options, opinions still differ on how to proceed. Regardless of our differing opinions, we have all no doubt witnessed, we have no doubt witnessed frontline employees such as teachers and administrators, cafeteria workers and bus drivers rise to the challenge. This is far from an exhausting, exhaustive list of the important people who help our students thrive each day. The students, that is why we do, we all do what we do. As a community of families, we can still do our part if our children are in school one day or five days. PTOs and PTAs do so much for our classroom and students. Often, PTOs are relied on to provide items ranging from basic supplies to scientific equipment such as animals for dissection. In addition, teacher hospitality is a function of parent-teacher organization, and I think we can all agree that we need a little treat now and then. All of our teachers need our support, and most certainly, all of our children do. We can all benefit from helping one another.
Thank you. That concludes our 30-minute allotment for public comments, and I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. We really appreciate your presence. That brings us to approval of minutes from the August 4, 2020 meeting. I move that we approve the August 4 minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, full approval. That brings us to the amended consent agenda. I move that we approve the amended consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, full approval, nine aye. Okay, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. I want to say welcome this evening and to the general public. Thank you for tuning in. We are in week three of an unprecedented school year. I've had the chance to travel to 33 schools so far. I have been absolutely impressed with the many, many examples of our teachers, of our administrators, many comments you've heard this evening, giving them much gratitude and praise, and I want to echo that because as a former teacher, it is a daunting task right now, but our teachers and staff have been absolutely amazing, so I want to say thank you. You deserve more than just kudos, you deserve everything in the world, and I especially want to say to our teacher here tonight, thank you again for being here. Week one obviously presented some challenges specifically on the technology issue, but everyone worked together to keep things moving and keep our kids engaged. I do believe that each week as we're going through this, we're getting better, we're learning lessons. As I've been on record before, we are truly reinventing public education, and I'm very, very proud of our beginning attempts to bring back some sense of normalcy. I've always said we believe very much that this is the start of that journey, not the end, and we certainly want to end back and get to a point where we can have additional face-to-face days as needed in time. I also want to thank our school support staff, all of our school-based employees, our bus drivers, our maintenance workers, our custodial team. We preach the word Team UCS all the time, and I think what has happened to launch the beginning of the school year is a very good example of our team. I also want to thank our nurses. This is the first time in the history of UCS that we have a dedicated nurse in every building, and I want to say thank you to our nurses, and then especially to our two lead nurses, Wendy Nielsen and Christine Strzokowski. They have been working since the very beginning of this pandemic with the county and with our schools to prepare, and have done an absolutely wonderful job. And lastly, I'd like to thank our parents and families. As many of you know, not only am I superintendent, but my wife and I live here. Our kids are, have two in middle school. They are taking advantage of their one day as well, and every day is a new day, and every day presents new challenges. And I want to acknowledge to our families, thank you for sticking with us, thank you for staying committed to our wonderful school system, and I want to say thank you for your patience and understanding. I did also want to let the general public know, if you didn't know, that just recently last week, on our UCS website, under the reopening section, we have a weekly COVID case dashboard that we are populating for that era of transparency so that the general public can see, school by school, what we have going on. And finally, I'll say patience and grace. Those are the two words we've asked for. At some point in time, we're gonna, we're gonna have to move on past those two terms, but I do want to say, as we started this year, thank you to our entire community for your support. Last night, we held an absolutely wonderful Canvas Parent Session on Facebook, and I want to give Casey Remmer a big shout-out for doing a wonderful job. So far, we've had more than 6,000 views of that video. Parents were very engaged in that session. If you missed it, you can still view the video. It is archived on the UCS Facebook page. A link is on the UCS homepage, and there is also a link under the Canvas Resources on the Empowered Family Portal page. This week is College Colors Week across the nation. We have encouraged our school staff and central services staff to wear shirts and gear for their favorite college or university. Last year, we expanded this initiative to be a district-wide initiative, and we're excited to do it again. You all, a lot of you already know who I'll be rooting for. I have my University of Texas mask, so I'm ready to go. And so, shout-out to them, and again, looking forward to seeing the many, many more pictures and in-person visits of our kids wearing their college year. Finally, as you all know, Monday is Labor Day. All schools and offices are closed, so please, we want to encourage our families and staff to please take a three-day weekend to be with one another, relax and regroup. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Houlihan. That brings us to the North Carolina School Board Association Matters. There, I received a letter from the North Carolina School Board that there is a District Six vacancy to the Board of Directors. So I wanted to make all the board members aware that, that Mrs. Ham shakes, that any board members that are interested in applying to serve in this vacancy, the official deadline will be October 1st, but you will have to be committed to serving on meetings in November, March, June, and September. March, June, and September. This year, those meetings will be virtual, but you need to have 100% attendance in those four virtual meetings. You will also be required to serve on two committees, if you're interested, and offer a one-page essay and color photo. I have the application here, so any board member that is interested in the District Six vacancy, see me tonight after the meeting and we'll hand this application off. Are there any questions?
Ms. Marrow, I'd be interested in applying for the position.
See me after the meeting, and we will get your application prepared and the full board. Is there anyone else interested other than Mr. Sides? Okay, then we will work on that together, Mr. Sides, and we'll get your application in well before October 1st.
You mean by work on it together, you mean you'll do the one-page report for me?
I will take the photograph and you can do the essay. Okay. The other thing that I wanted to discuss with everyone is that we have the upcoming Delegate Assembly, I believe in November, and we need to identify up to four board members that would be able to watch and participate in the virtual meeting this year for the North Carolina School Board and represent Union County Public Schools. So I will just open it. Are there, Mrs. Hightail? Mr. Sides? Todd Price?
What days are?
You know, I apologize. I do not have dates, but Mrs. Malarkey may have those. So the delegates are needed, and we have three, and we are allowed up to four.
I'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Benchin. So that brings us to four, Donna. So we have Mrs. Hightail, Mr. Sides, Mr. Price, and Mr. Benchin. Okay, and last, for information, I want the full board to know that Dr. Edwin Dunlap at the North Carolina School Board Association has announced his retirement from NCSBA after 41 years of service. His retirement will be effective January 4th, and I just wanted to make sure because every single one of us has been to the Raleigh office for our training as new board members, and he has been a 41-year presence, and we've seen him at all of our district meetings and in Raleigh. So any board member that wants to shoot him an email and/or card or something, let me know, and we'll get something to Mr. Dunlap or Dr. Dunlap to thank him for his 41 years of service. And thank you, I think this is the first year that we've had four people volunteer to serve as delegates, so thank you very much. Virtual meetings might be the new way to go to get more, more attendance. Okay, I would like to turn it over to Matt Helms for a Citizens Advisory Committee update on diversity.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Strategic Planning, Information Technology, and Transportation Committee met on August 26. We went through the list of applicants that applied for the Citizens Advisory Committee on Diversity, and we present to you tonight a list of, for our slate of people from each district, and that includes an employee, a community member, three faith-based community members, students. And on the students, I'd like to note too, there was supposed to be one student for each cluster, but we did not have enough students for each cluster, so we just decided to vote on everybody that applied for it, because it was 11th and 12th graders, and that filled the slots for the students. And I will read the list of names for the community members by cluster. Actually, we also had an administrator also, and correct me if I'm wrong, was it one central service employee also? All right, so the administrator is a principal from Forest Hills, Maxie Johnson. All right, my list, cluster, it's a Forest Hills cluster. Yes, sorry. For the Marvin Ridge cluster, the community member is Reggie Atkins. For the Weddington cluster, the community member is Sadiq Berry. For the Monroe cluster, the community member is Selena Campbell. For the Piedmont cluster, the community member is Joseph Ellis. For the Sun Valley cluster, the community member is Mrs. Monique Holt. For the Forest Hills cluster, the community member is Thomas LeGrand Jr. For the Porter Ridge cluster, the community member is Melanie Miller. And for the Parkwood cluster, the community member is Kimberly Morrison Hansley. Moving on to the employees, and we also decided that the South Providence School should have a voice in this. For the South Providence, the employee is Heather Diaz. For the Parkwood cluster, the employee is Mike Helms. For the Piedmont cluster, the employee is Rebecca King. For the Porter Ridge cluster, the employee is Garrett Malone. For the Sun Valley cluster, the employee is Cheryl Mimi. And for the Forest Hills cluster, the employee is Matt Sides. For the Monroe cluster, the employee is Ernestine Staten. And for Central Services, the employee is Amanda Stinchcomb. For our faith-based community, we have Alicia Allen, Sergey Zeke, and Robert Capers. And for the students, we have Emily Adama, Audrey Anzel, Darby Burgett, Mia Capella, Raleigh Khan, Leah Cadetti, Hadi Picazo Gonzalez, Jade Robinson, Olivier Santos, Rachel Skinner, and Ava Tarkulia. And that concludes the list of members from the community or Citizens Advisory Committee on Diversity.
And I think those names come to the full board, so a second is not required.
That comes out of SPIT committee.
So are there any comments or questions from the board before we vote? Are any questions of the SPIT committee? And for those who don't know, Strategic Planning, Transportation, Technology, and there may be even more.
Well, Strategic Planning, Information Technology, and Transportation.
The fellows decided to call it SPIT, and we're going with that. If there are no questions from the board about these applicants and the names that are being brought for me to us tonight, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none? The Citizens Advisory Committee on Diversity passes 9-0.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just coming to my attention too, I missed the Cuperson Cluster community member, Mrs. Joy Robbins.
Okay, yes, thank you. And I think we should also mention that the update on the facilitator coming out of SPIT, we did select a facilitator to oversee this committee, just like we did for realignment, and we are in communication with that facilitator. We just have not had an opportunity to meet with her, to give her a scope of what our wishes are for this year-long commitment. Therefore, she could not provide us a budget, or we could not give her a budget to work within. So we are not going to vote on the facilitator tonight until we can speak with her and determine the scope of the work and how many meetings we want to have and what her fee would be. So we will bring the facilitator back to us either at a special call meeting or another date. So we'll cross that bridge later. If that's all, Mr. Helms, we will move to the curriculum update. Mr. Sides?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Curriculum Committee met last week, and before Dr. Breedlove gives us some information on attendance data that we have to date, I'll just hit some highlights that it's in agreement on the committee as well as staff, offering some of our educators some flexibility, trying to give them a little bit of a break. As you know, the state provides and mandates, whatever you want to call it, the use of Canvas as the platform, and it's been a struggle for our parents, I'll raise my hand to that, and challenges for some of our Yeomanor students that aren't familiar with it. So we have asked, and it has been granted, that we offer the flexibility to any educators that have used Google Classroom in the past as an alternative or supplement to Canvas, that they have a reprieve going forward, that they are able to do so again, if that makes their life a little bit easier. I know it will for a lot of parents. Also, on the grade level, elementary in particular, we, the term subject coordination, in other words, if you have a group of, say, four third-grade teachers, and one wants to specialize in teaching English to all of those fourth-grade classrooms, and the principal approves and it works out that that's the best manner for their grade level, then feel free, with of course, a proper approval, that that's an opportunity to maximize your resources. We are also requesting flexibility in assessment testing. There are, of course, state guidelines, and there's some necessary assessments to understand where the kids are in particular subjects. But any particularly unnecessary assessments, we ask that they be waived whenever possible to make our teacher, again, try and help make their lives a little bit easier. We were also presented with data for grades K through 2, which Dr. Breedlove is going to show. What we specifically asked is to find out for those four days of in-class instruction for grades K through 2, how many kids, how many of our students are enrolled in Option B and D, as we can tell. Now, these numbers, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Breedlove, these are not actual attendance. That data we are still gathering, but this is enrollment. And the difference is, we have parents that, for various reasons, signed up for Plan D, the one-day-in-class instruction, and chose not to have their students utilize that one day in class. So your actual enrollment figures may differ from actual attendance, but for our purposes of trying to follow the governor's edict as far as six-foot spacing required in the classroom, if we're using enrollment, then that number should be on the safe side, and actual attendance may be lower. So we're trying to work to the top side, if you will. So Dr. Breedlove, with that, is that a satisfactory introduction where we're going here?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Sides. And just to step away real quick and come back to Mr. Helms. I think you are the official name reader from now on, on all names, and you can step in and call graduations from now on. So you did a great job with the names. But yes, I did place the report that was generated last week following the Curriculum Committee meeting in board docs for our school board to preview and look at. And that report, that report is just as Mr. Sides described, and that is a report of those students who signed up to attend for Plan B in our schools, and it's broken down by kindergarten, first, and second grade only. What that report does is it shows on Monday how many students per classroom at each one of our elementary schools should be in attendance on Monday, should be in attendance on Tuesday, should be in attendance on Wednesday and Thursday. What that doesn't show is the actual headcount in that classroom on that particular day. It is more challenging to grab that information, but in the short time that we had, I think that it's important, and what the committee asked for, is important to know on the maximum side, how many should be in that classroom. If everyone attended on that day, who signed up to attend? And so looking at that data, you can go through from, all the way from Antioch to Wingate and see approximately kindergarten, first, and second grade, how many students should be in each class per day, per grade level. And so with that data, it will allow for a discussion on adding more students, combining classrooms, what that would look like on the data attendance side of things. So of course, if we want to take this the next step further, it would be then going to calculate the number of students who are present on site. And being able to do that, I would sort of defer on how long that may take to be able to generate that report to our Power School team. That may be something that we want to look at, and you know, of course, I will answer any questions from the board about this document or next steps on the data.
I think we started out with 25% across the board, A, B, C, D. We knew that that was going to be a little bit on the low side. So I think this is the discussion that is, when are we going to be ready to do the next step, which is add another day to the school for the Plan B students? We've talked about it when we, back in July, when we said this is what we're going to do under B, and we want it to be. I think it's time to start to say that, that we need to start doing that. We need to have an additional day. And we've, you know, discussed a little bit, you know, should it happen after Labor Day? I know that we've talked about tiers. I know that we got all the EC kids into the building in separate classrooms and all that kind of stuff. We have more students that need to come in. So are we going to be ready to do that in the next couple weeks? I know that we are, I think, did you guys have a discussion about that at curriculum?
Yeah.
Okay. I, you know, I don't, I don't know the attendance. All that's in here is K, pre-K through 2, but I would like to see getting an additional day by the end of September.
Ms. Hightail, I will, I will offer to that, just for all of you that may not be familiar with all the minutia here. We are required, under Plan B, to use six-foot social distancing as our benchmark for the number of students in the classroom. And we've determined, depending upon school, because as you imagine, older schools tend to have a little smaller classrooms, newer, larger. We've figured that around 10 to 12 students per class in order to conform to the guidelines. Now, I think I speak for all of my board members. We would like to have kids as many days as possible back in the classroom safely, for all concerns, staff as well as students. And I want to be very clear that I want to commend the yeoman job our staff and our teachers are doing to cope with this, as Dr. Houlihan said, a total change in public education. I feel, after review and discussion amongst the committee and review of the data, I believe our most sensitive students are two groups of which I intend to propose a motion. I believe our kindergarten and first-grade students are the most vulnerable for, first of all, we don't have Chromebooks for them. Second of all, I don't, my personal opinion, I don't think it's appropriate for those age. Second of all, I don't, my personal opinion, I don't think it's appropriate for those age groups. I think they need to be in the classroom with a teacher as much as possible. I am also concerned about our most, the remainder that we've been unable to address of our most fragile student environment, those with IEPs, 504s, and MTSS Tier 3s. So I am going to offer the following two, I'll, I'll put it in one motion. If you want me to break it up, I'll be glad to. I would like to make a motion, and this is not from the
All 504s?
Hold on. This is, I just want to make this clear, this is not from the curriculum committee, so it will need a second. I would like to propose, based on the data, that kindergarten and first-grade classes, when they return to school on September 29th, Tuesday, the 29th, we go to a two-day-in-class sessions for kindergarten and first grade. That's going to be my first motion. Or as part of that motion, or second, however you want to do it, I would like to, I would make a motion that staff undertake a review of the IEPs for all those students with IEPs or 504 plans or MTSS Tier 3 to determine if, as their IEP committee determines the best interest of the students, to be back in the classroom up to four days a week on all grade levels, K through 12. Now, we don't have the data for the remainder of elementary students. That's going to be diff, more difficult. Here's the thing, on the lower grades, we had the state mandated smaller classroom size. So even without the attendance, if we were following the state guidelines, this should work. But we also must take into consideration the teachers, the, the change, again, this will put on them in their curriculum and in their, their teaching methods. So I can't, I, I don't think it's fair to do as much as I would like, frankly. So I think we need to start somewhere as we get, and I'm going to press Dr. Breedlove for the, the data for per class, per day, for remaining grades, and we reconvene, if necessary, a special meeting to determine if we can extend additional days to additional grade levels. But I feel comfortable and would like to make the motion, first of all, that grades kindergarten and first grade on Tuesday, September 9th, when they return, go to a two-in-class schedule for moving forward for the remainder of the semester, or until further notice, when we have other guidelines and we can change again. And I will offer that motion first, as separate from the other one.
I would offer an alternate motion that we let K through 12 go back two days, beginning September 29th. I mean, yes, we have to look at the data, we have to look at the attendance, but I, we, I get, I totally agree with you on K through 1, that we need to get K through 1 back in the classroom. But I also think we need to be looking at K through 12.
Well, and, and we're talking about equality, too. Is, are we giving the same equal time to all students? And by that standard, we're not. And when my child was in school, just because he didn't have an IEP, I still want, if he was in this situation, I would still want him in the classroom as much as possible. So, you know, to segregate that out, I don't think it's fair to all students. So I'd like to second Ms. Heintal's motion of allowing all students to come back full-time on the 29th. Oh, no, I'm sorry, sorry, two days a week.
An additional, for the Plan B.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Got, I got all of her zealous. On the 29th, that way, that'll go into the second six weeks. That gives our teachers time to prepare.
The 9th, right?
No.
There's some confusion here, and I just want to caution the board that we're having a conversation without a second. So, so, okay, okay, but we did not second Mr. Sides.
You just second the initial motion to start, to start the ball rolling.
So did you offer a friendly amendment to Mr.? A separate, okay. So, so we did not get a second. Did anyone want to offer a second to Mr. Sides? Okay, then we have a motion and a second for Mrs. Heintal. And I think some of the confusion that I heard Mr. Sides' motion, Mr. Sides, at one point, you mentioned September 29th, and then you mentioned September 9th.
I, I meant the 29th. After we, I, I believe the 28th is the teacher work day. So
Because the first grading period ends. But we also have to remember our elementary schools are on a nine-week calendar, not a six-week calendar, but
But we also have to remember our parents, our, will our parents be prepared to bring our, to bring our students back on the 29th?
That gives them time. If today's the first, that gives them time to prepare. And but also allowing everybody to go back at the same time.
It does not give all. I think, I think four weeks gives teachers and parents some time to prepare, right? And it gives staff to give
I could send mine back tomorrow. I mean, no problem.
I do, I do, I want to caution, we do have to look at the attendance numbers to make sure that we're in compliance with the state's requirements. And I know that that's, it's six feet apart, and it's masks, and we have to have six feet apart in, in any area of the schools where kids can congregate. So we have to make sure that we are making, we can do that in our classrooms. So I think that, Dr. Houlihan and staff, is that something you guys can look into? But I think that it would be important for K through 12 to go back an additional day. It's something that we talked about on July 14th, when we talked about Plan B, that we wanted to start cautiously and then add.
I was in a conversation today, and I can tell you that that one day is going to make a, a huge difference. The desire, and I think our teacher here tonight in public comments said it best, and I even wrote a note, and when I write notes, you're in trouble. You know, face to face, you know, there, there, there's nothing like that. There's no substitute. So as much as we can get them face to face, you know, we, we have this situation, but we can't become so crippled that we do nothing. So I think this is a great way to kickstart what hopefully will be the beginning of a good journey.
I have another question. So, Ms. Merrill, since you asked staff, how long, Dr. Houlihan and Dr. Breedlove, do you think you can get those, that information back to the board about classroom sizes, et cetera?
That's a, that is a tricky question. It's not because I don't want to, one, I'd like to turn that over tonight if I could, but there are a lot of different groups involved with that particular information. For example, the report that I was able to get generated stemmed from working with members of the academics team, working with our department technology and, and gathering that data from Beth Broadway and her group that worked with Power School. And then, you know, adding to that is, you know, not all schools are, are cookie cutter schools. They are all different shapes and sizes and classrooms and, and what have you. And so working with Dave Burnett and Mr. Strickland and their team of saying, okay, you know, this is what we could do at this school or that school. And so coming up with a number, obviously, we can generate this data. So doing this, what I did for K through 2, I could probably turn over by the end of the week, 3, 4, and 5. It may take a little bit longer into next week to do the 6th grade through the 12th grade. Remember, 9 through 12, it's not daily attendance, it's attendance by class period. And so there's a lot of moving parts with that. So combination of who signed up for what and who's actually attending, could take a little bit to generate, but by sometime next week, probably could have everything. I don't know when next week, probably maybe a Wednesday or Thursday.
I guess the data that's in pre-K through 2 is somewhat helpful because it's the plan, everybody who picked Plan B, whether or not they're going to school. So that's kind of like your worst scenario, right? If all of these people were going to school that day, that's what it would look like. But it's something less than that or the same as that, right? So at least it gives us some, a baseline. Thank you.
Well, and to your point, we have data for K through 2. We don't for the other grades. I understand, and I support everyone's intention. I, I got an eighth grader, I'd like to send back two, two days a week tomorrow, too. But we don't have that data. I think it is, it is appropriate tonight that we deal with what we know for sure is going to work because we have the data, reconvene when we have the remaining data, and then we can commit to the other grades that will work. What I don't want to do is commit tonight to something that the data, when we finally do get it, will not support, and we're backtracking. That's unfair to everybody. That's, that's throwing the car in reverse halfway down the tollway.
I agree with Gary. We need the data before.
So I would like to add, you know, from, from all the conversations and emails and stuff that I have seen, right now, we have anywhere from like 2 to 6 students showing up in the classroom that traditionally has had 25 to 35 students in it. One kid. So, so with, so with that, I've waited my turn. So, so with that being said, you know, if classrooms are designed and built to hold 25 to 35 students, and we only have 1 to 6 showing up on Plan B, then, you know, the quick math is, is that you would have those 1 to 6 showing up two days a week. So I don't, I don't really understand why this is a class size, you know, problem, because we already see that just means that that one student is showing up two days instead of one day, or those six kids are showing up two days instead of one day, but maybe more parents, I mean, because keep in mind, 18% of our enrollment signed up for the virtual academy Plan D. 82% of our families signed up for Plan B, but may or may not be sending them right now. But they may, they may start sending them, so we need to be prepared for that. But with the numbers we already have, we, we know that our, our buildings hold students. And we also know that we have large spaces like gymnasiums and everything else that are not being utilized as classrooms now. If we did have to, you know, put classrooms, you know, into the gymnasiums. So, you know, with that being said, we have always known that we were going to follow the superintendent's philosophy that we all agreed to, that we were going to start slow to go fast. We're not proposing that all 42,000 students come back on September 29th. We're proposing that we add a second day because one day, from what I am hearing, simply just is not enough. So we've gone slow. We've had a re-entry plan. And on September 25th, our first grading period will end. And then we'll have a teacher work day on the 28th, and students will return to school on September 29th. So that's kind of a clean break to add a second day. Now, what that means for elementary students who are on a nine-week schedule, then maybe they'll get three extra weeks before their report card to have that second day face to face with their teachers. So with that being said, I would just reiterate that we can only do this under current, you know, we saw today that there was a, a slight decline in COVID positivity rates, and, and, you know, hoping that the COVID and everything continues to drop like we saw today in some of the report numbers. You know, the conversation we're having is that, is assuming that between now and September 29th, that things continue on that downward decline. Or the governor comes back and, and says that, you know, if, if, if he changes his Plan B, if he's ready to transition towards Plan A. But I'm going to end there and give other board members an opportunity to speak. But I wouldn't mind having you repeat your motion.
My motion was to add an additional day, additional in-school day for all Plan B students beginning Tuesday, September 29th. And I would, and that would be part of directing staff to get the numbers to see what the class sizes would be at that point.
I think that in part of the conversation that I had today was about those numbers and the fact that a lot of them that signed up to come in started out great, but have fallen off because they felt alone, like most of their counterparts were home. And so I think adding that second day might provide a motivational boost to those other kids as a clear sign that school is really in session, and that might help propel them and provide relief to those parents who probably all need teacher certifications by now, the, the help that they need as well.
One thing I wanted to point out, too, not only is it classroom size, we've got to look at bus capacity also. That's another factor.
Say, we talked, you guys talked about it at Spit, so that's another thing we have to look at. But what I was hearing at Spit is that we had lots of capacity on buses.
And I just have a question.
And what about, what, can I ask one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
School nutrition, is that going to be an issue? If we send, it should not be an issue?
We would not anticipate school nutrition being an issue. We're, we're set up to handle the 25% per day now. And I, I think one challenge we might would have that we would really have to focus on and do a good job on is making sure we maintain the social distancing as they come to the cafeteria. And, and we do an excellent job at that, at the lower levels. We would have to really reinforce that at the higher levels, but I believe we can handle that.
Are most students eating in their classrooms, or are they eating in cafeterias? I've heard classrooms.
But we have some of all of it. I couldn't give you a percentage right now. Some schools have chosen to go to the dining room just to give the kids a break. Others have taken the food.
That's better than cafeteria.
Others have chosen to take the meals back to the classrooms. If you recall, as far as the buses go, we did discuss this at Spit, so our bus routes are currently set up. We're running the full route right now. So we're, we're running the routes and making the stops. So anything that we add to that would be a part of that existing route. And that's why we planned it that way, so that when we could go back to school, we'd already have it in place.
All right. The one question I had, too, is there any way to get K through 1 in four days a week? Because I think they're the most vulnerable. I mean, I couldn't imagine being at home with the laptop and a kindergarten student, first grader.
Well, and do our K ones have packets? Because we do not have, um, devices for K one. We do have devices for two through 12. So our kindergarten, first graders, are they working out of packets or are they logging on with their teachers?
It's a little bit of, uh, everything.
I would say, or a combination of both, depending on the school's plan.
That's correct. Um, just depending on, on what kind of home devices they have. They're still using Canvas and things like that that students can access. But those that don't have a device or don't have the internet, certainly we provide hard copies uh, for those students that they come in once a week, they get the hard copy, then they take that home. Uh, or if students aren't coming in at all, they are able to pick those up or be, or they're being mailed.
And where are we on students with IEPs? How many days a week are they going in?
It's really based on, uh, self-contained at this point. And those students have the option to come in all four days of the week. That's, that was the initial group that we put in the very beginning of our opening that would be the most fragile and needy to be served.
Oh, I got one more or two more questions, really. How will we propose going additional days? Would it be one, two alternating days or what?
To look, to look at. Because if you, if you look at the K through two, pre K through two report, it's kind of all over the place. But you can see some trending in different letters of the alphabet.
That's what I was going to, is there a natural break in the alphabet as far as like the breakdown of attendance? Like, I mean, one, one school might be H or M, whatever, but.
That's again, I think, as you've, you've heard, that's why we need the time to look at that data and determine where you're going to fundamentally make a, another change with the schedule, with the weekly schedule. Um, and so that's something that we would need a little bit more time to dig into, Mr. Helms, to look at, you know, would this mean that Mondays and Tuesdays, um, last names A through whatever come in? And then Wednesdays and Thursdays or whatever that model may look like. So I, we can't answer that question right now, but we know that it's something that is part of this discussion. Staff and I are going to have to review to see what adjustments would have to be made.
I would recommend for staff, um, to consider an AB group. Look at, look at the alphabet and determine what works. But, um, I would be a little bit hesitant on, you know, bringing kids in for two days with all the cleaning and stuff in between. Like if, if we could have groups come in for two straight days, you know, if this works as a better option and then have Wednesday as a cleaning day or Thursday, Friday is the other two days. I mean, I don't know if that's something, um, but I'll just offer it to staff to figure out. Um, because I know right now, um, you know, we have Friday is our remote day and that gives us an opportunity to really scrub those schools good. But I, I just want to make sure we're not mixing groups of students. Like some students come in on Monday, Wednesday, but then different students come in on Tuesday, Thursday and cross contaminating. So I just want to kind of.
Dr. Houlihan, do you think this is viable?
Yeah, yeah, that was going to be my, that was going to be my question. Are you saying when you, when you said you need more time, were you talking about beyond the 29th? Or, you know, that's, that's what I want, I want to get an idea of what your, what your time is.
So my, my initial reaction is this, um, I want everyone to understand the balancing act. We all have to figure out how to make this work. As you, as I've said before, I want our kids back face to face for as many days as we can. But as long as the state is under Plan B, we have to follow those rules and requirements. Um, we are proving, I think, to the entire state based on our plan, which the current plan, I've said this publicly, was designed to, to do exactly what it's doing, which is to start the school year off with, with as low numbers as we can to ensure student and staff safety. Um, and to allow for our teachers to have the chance to really grow into, again, an educational system that, that we're, that's never existed before. So, um, I have a principals meeting this Friday. Um, I, I do personally like the idea of, of a, when we have the end of that grading cycle, of that being a possible way to change our current model. As Ms. Merrill said, as long as we have the, the health and safety data in the county and in our schools that are, that are satisfying that. Um, I think that we have done an excellent job with our current plan and recognize the need to, to, to try to do maybe a little bit more. I am comfortable with the current motion on the table. I'd like to get additional feedback from principals and staff this week and next. I would welcome another board meeting if the board sees fit to come back to review data and have another discussion about the viability of that. I also want to make sure that the general public understands that when you're looking at COVID data, and I'm not in the health industry, I don't claim to be, um, this is a lagging indicator. And so we've always said from day one, in consultation with the Health Department, we need at least three weeks, which is the end of this week and possibly even till end of next week, to then look back on the impact of schooling from the past two weeks. And that is data that we're working with our Health Department on daily. So, um, rate of change is something that as humans, um, a lot of us struggle with that. And if you think about, back to when the governor made his first announcement about schools choosing Plan B or C, that gave us about a month to gear up and to really prepare for a Plan B implementation. If the board voted tonight to, to be, begin that consideration um, and come back to that discussion in a couple of weeks, um, I'm, I'm satisfied with that motion as it currently stands um, and would support that, knowing that that gives us as a staff and a community time. Um, while we want this to happen, you know, overnight, our staff, particularly our teachers, need that time to digest and breathe and prepare for adding additional kids if that's going to be what the, what the board chooses.
Well, hold on a minute. Are you saying you're comfortable with adding an extra day across the board, K 12, on the 29th of September without, or, but we might have to backtrack when the data becomes available?
What I'm saying is this is such a fluid situation that if the, if the board would like to vote on this this evening, um, what I would recommend is to have the board come back in a couple of weeks to review kind of where we are, to make sure that we're, we're, we're heading down that road appropriately. Does that make sense?
That we're on track.
Correct.
All right. Let me, let me ask my fellow board members this question. Are we in agreement that if one school doesn't work? In other words, we can't fit, you know, the guidelines in one school, it's off for everybody? For that grade level or all the, all the high schools? We're not going to do one high school because we can make it work there and not over here. Is everybody?
I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the motion because again, we're not increasing students. We're increasing, we're allowing that one to six. We know how many students from Plan B are currently attending the classroom and we know that there is one child sitting in some of our classrooms. Now that one child gets to come two days a week or those six children get to come two days a week. That's what we're talking about.
Well, that's exactly my point. We don't know that. We know certain instances, but we don't have data for all schools, all grade levels. We, we don't know that. We know right now for K two, we know who's registered. That's all we, that's all the data we have. We have personal experience, we have, you know, other experiences, but we don't know that across the board yet. We know for this, we know K two, we know what, what the data is, but we don't know for everybody else. And that, that was why I asked, if one school blows it up, it blows it up for every, everybody on that, that level. And so what I'm saying is, I, I, again, I go back to my, well, I can't go back to my motion, but I'm saying we take into account what the data tells us now and reconvene when we have the data for everything else and can commit further on down the road for other grade levels. I, I just, I don't understand how we can commit to these grade lev, other grade levels that we don't have data for.
So are you suggesting that we hold off on the September, the 29th date?
No, I think, to be honest with you, I go back to my motion. I think we can commit for K one. We can commit. We have the intention of trying to expand it across the board, K 12, by the 29th, if the data supports it.
I second Gary's motion. Can I second that?
Um, his motion failed.
No, his motion is gone. Dr. Breedlove, uh, you know, the, the, we may not have all the data, but we should have some data on schools across the board on what the classrooms are, are, are like at this point. Well, what, what we're doing, and when we talk about all the data, we're just talking about the, all the data over a three-week time. But we know what the data was last week. We know what the data was the week before. So based on those numbers right now, you know, are we, are we, uh, filling up classrooms? Because the conversation I had today is that we're not filling up classrooms of those that have just chosen, um, you know, uh, to, to come back.
No. The, the data that was supplied to the curriculum committee is for kindergarten.
No, no, I'm not talking about that, Gary. I'm asking Dr. Breedlove, uh, at this point in time, from whether it's Marvin Ridge High School or Forest Hills High School or middle school, you know, we, we have numbers on who's coming to school. And, and, and within those numbers right now, whether it's a three-week average or a two-week average, uh, we should, we, we, we know our students that are coming. And, and from the conversation that I had today, uh, those classrooms, even based on those that wanted to come back for the one day, there is not a lot of folks coming back for that one day.
And the motion on the floor is allowing those, those minimal amount of students to now come a second day instead of just one day.
And I agree with that. I like.
So we have a motion and a second. We've had plenty of conversation. I propose that we, um, that we move forward with a vote. And, um, do, do you want, does your motion stand? Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, so you, okay. So all those in, in favor of the motion to add a sec, second day, September 29th, and allow staff to start gathering some data and bring it back to us. Um, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
So that is seven to, the motion passes. Okay, I have a question along the same lines before we move on. Um, the governor reopened, uh, playgrounds today. What is the plan for Union County Public Schools, um, to allow kids to play on the playground? Does that fall under you, Mr. McCraw? Okay.
Uh, Ms. Merrill, we have been using outdoor facilities. We have not been using playground equipment. We'll have to look at what the governor, um, issued today and decide what we can do from this point forward. But we have had, we have had outside recess. We have been having that, so.
But just not on the equipment because of cleaning?
That is correct. We've got large equipment that you can't clean in between each recess period. So we'll have to look at that to see if we can start using it.
Okay, please, um, please take a look at that because I've had a lot of questions from teachers and families today when the governor made that announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. And just, um, send us an email once you, um, get enough information that you can update the full board.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
And notify all the schools and teachers to let them know what they can allow our students to do.
I've had several questions this evening already, so I'll, I'll, I'll update you as soon as I know more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCraw.
Uh, Ms. Merrill, before we move on, uh, I know we passed curriculum. Can I, um, ask the board's indulgence to consider my proposed second motion that we ask for the review process to, to either commence or continue for our EC students, uh, remaining EC students, 504 students, MTSS tier three students? And if the, uh, team so agrees that these students have the opportunity on all grade levels to return to up to four days of in-class, uh, work?
Just so I understand, you're just asking for them to look into it?
For the, uh, IEP team.
But you're asking, I understand the, the student population.
If the team says it's best for that student to go up to four days or three days or whatever, then they have the, um, the parents, of course, in agreement, they have the option to do that. That they be given the leeway and the preference to, to have up to four days in-class study.
I second that.
Okay, well, we can open the floor up for a conversation to ask questions.
So are we talking about IEPs, 504s?
Your problem with my motion was that you, you, we didn't have the data. Do you have the data on these groups of children we're talking about? Okay, just asking.
And these students, in my opinion, are, are a priority. I, I know you do. Um, and should be can, given, um, an opportunity to, um, fulfill the requirements of the IEP that their team feels is necessary for that student to have up to four days in classroom study.
So just as a clarification, um, Dr. Houlihan, you did just say, um, a few moments ago that, um, I guess students with IEPs in contained classrooms are currently in school four days a week if they and their family want four days a week. So that's currently underway, right? So Mr. Sides, are you referring to students that are, that may have an IEP or a 504 that are not in a contained classroom?
Correct. An MTSS level three, tier three.
Mrs. Merrill, can I add something?
Yes, because I know you sent the tiers, um, to the full board about a month ago, please.
Well, I just want to be careful because what I'm hearing Mr. Sides say is if the team believes it's appropriate. So you're asking for IEP teams to convene and we're talking about in the neighborhood of 4,000 EC students with IEPs alone. There's no way that the district can convene that number of IEP team meetings and then add 504 students in a, in a reasonable timeframe to address this issue. The other concern I have is IEPs are currently being implemented and delivered as written. So I want to be careful that we're not saying that IEPs are not being delivered in the format that they are because they, that's the requirement that we have and we've worked with remote learning contingency plans, et cetera. So, um, I just want you to be careful what you're asking staff to do.
Right now, those, that, that bunch of students that you're talking about, Mr. Sides, would be part of the two-day, one-day expansion.
Right.
Um, and then you're talking about all four days?
Well, it, as decided by the, let, let me ask it this way. Um, Michelle, if, if an IEP team feels that this student needs four days in-class instruction or that remote isn't going to work for them and we're not able to comply, we say, look, the maximum we can do is two days. Are we in any kind of legal jeopardy because we are not conforming to the, uh, the, uh, accommodations of an IEP? I understand it, it may be difficult to, you know, we have, we're going to have a time lag with that many to address. But I'm saying overall, if that team comes up and says, look, this, this child, because of the accommodations can just not do remote and needs to be in the classroom as many days as humanly possible. And we go, well, I'm sorry, you can only go two and you have to go remote two. Are we not then violating that IEP and could be as, in, as much, um, jeopardy?
I'm not comfortable giving legal advice, you know, in this setting. I just want you to know that we've developed remote learning contingency plans for students with IEPs and are implementing those remote learning conting- with IEPs and are implementing those remote learning contingency plans as written.
Part of the conversation I, I had to, uh, centered around that as well, and that, um, those, that population is probably really hurting from a lack of face-to-face. So that's why I seconded, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Sides' motion because, um, the more we can do for them, the, the better.
And five oh fours, I mean, that could be for whatever reason, not necessarily they need face-to-face, but just for medical reasons too.
Well, it could be, they needed extended testing time for integrated testing, so.
Okay, so we've had plenty of discussion. We have a motion and a second. Um, and I just want to confirm what your motion is. You, you are asking, um, for students with, um, IEPs that are not in a, currently in a contained classroom, five oh fours and MTSS, for all of those students to go four days a week?
No, that is not correct. That we, uh, abide by the guideline, the recommendations of the IEP team if it calls for up to four days of in-class instruction.
Can I ask a question? So how do you answer Michelle's, uh, Mrs. Morris's concerns? That we would have to convene all these IEP?
Well, you have to anyway. I mean, they've, I, I can't say we're going to do them all next week. But as, I mean, there are obligations to when they be updated anyway. So I, I'm not necessarily committing to a rollout time specific, but giving the leeway for the accommodations, not demanding a timeframe.
So you're saying that when they get around to it, they could go up to four days?
If the team comes to the conclusion that that is necessary for an adequate ed- education or a, a mandated requirement, uh, opportunity for education for that student.
I have a question, Ms. Morris. How often are IEPs reevaluated? Is it?
It's annually, so it could be anywhere from September to June.
Okay, so if I have an I, a student with an IEP and the IEP got initiated, say, March, it's reevaluated in March again, correct?
Correct.
And if Ms. Heindl has a student with one and hers is in October, hers gets reevaluated in October.
That's the schedule that they have to be, they have to be reviewed annually. Now, can they be reviewed more frequently than that? Absolutely. But if we're looking at, if what Mr. Sides is saying, looking at the schedule on which they're currently set to be reevaluated, it could be anytime, any, at, you know, from now until, you know, the day before tomorrow, you know, yesterday, a year from now. Whatever I'm trying to say.
Yeah, Mr. Sides, I know that, that, what you're thinking of, and I know that your heart is in the right place to get these kids into school more often. But I think we can accomplish it by getting them in a second day like we're doing for all students and then evaluate from there.
Well, I'm going to go, I'm going to go to staff on this. And is this an insurmountable burden to have, uh, to give this opportunity to students with IEPs that, I mean, it, am I being unrealistic in expecting, um, on top of everything else, staff to being able to react to this in this, in this way? I mean.
I think that's something that staff and I can, can discuss and be part of this review and data collection process that we're going to have to go through in order to ensure that we can do the September twenty ninth. I think it is, it is not fair to say that we can have thousands of IEP meetings between now and then. That's just, that's just not going to happen.
Yeah.
Because of, we have them already on an annual basis on a schedule. So I'm a little bit concerned on that end. Um, I am, but again, in, in talking with staff, we will certainly continue the review process of all of our students, um, and want to do whatever we can that's in their best interest. So, um.
And I think that the data that we're look, going to be looking at, Mr. Sides, with respect to the second day, additional day of school, would help us with respect to the MTSS five oh fours and IEPs as well.
I think my short answer is I really can't answer that question right now.
All right, then I'm going to withdraw my motion. If the second will agree, I'm going to withdraw my motion and, and give staff some time to chew on it. How's that?
I don't think we have a table in a database that has, they need four days a week. I mean, that's kind of hard to.
So I have a question. I have a question. Staff, okay, so all of the students with an IEP in a contained classroom are currently going four days a week. For students that have an IEP, can they request, if, if the parent feels that they need to be in a contained classroom, what is the pro, if there's an open seat in that contained classroom socially distanced? Um, because we know that most of our classrooms can, can hold, you know, eight to 12 students. But let's say in the contained classroom, only fi- four or five are showing up. So is it possible for a parent with a student with an IEP that is not in a contained classroom to request to take one of those empty seats in a contained classroom if they feel their child needs four days a week?
I'll answer that for you, Dr. Breedlove, so you don't have to come to the thing. Uh, least restricted environment requires that we educate kids with typically developing peers as much as possible. A separate setting is one that is defined and placed on a student's IEP. To place a student who is not at that level would not be appropriate. Now, an IEP team could meet and determine that that's appropriate to meet the child's needs, but it has to be based on the needs of the child, not on the situation that we're in.
Okay.
I have, I have firsthand experience, and you don't want your student in a self-contained cla, you don't want your child in a self-contained class if you can help it. I can just tell you that firsthand experience. And I'll tell you afterwards.
Okay. Okay, I just was trying to come up with a compromise that if someone with an IP believes that they want, need four days a week, is that possible? So the answer was no. I'm good with no.
So I'm, I'm, Mr. Benj, if you're in agreement, I'm going to withdraw my motion pending study from staff, and we'll revisit it. Is that okay with you?
Pending study.
Yeah, yeah, well.
So, Mrs. Morris, um, all the categories that were included in Mr. Sides' motion, are they on tier two? Or, or all of those on the tier two that you had said earlier about a month ago? What was on tier two?
It was, I don't have it front of me, but it kept.
It was categories of students that have additional needs and, and so what probably would be MTSS, uh, EL students, you know.
But remember, that, that framework was, was designed not to necessarily jump to four full days. It was always designed to add another day. So that would still fall in with the motion that was, that was on the table.
That has already passed.
Correct.
Okay. That helps a lot. Because that, that tier was just to add one day at a time, which we've already covered that. Okay, I'm good with that. Are there any other questions, comments? If not, I would like to move forward with a finance update. In our finance committee meeting today, we had a discussion about $185,000 in, um, sales tax refund with respect to bond projects and it being included in our true-up funds of a million two thirty-eight that is used for, um, capital projects. I heard from the deputy county manager after our meeting, and there's a misunderstanding, and they will rectify, the county will rectify that issue at their Monday meeting with respect to the $185,000 for sales tax refunds. So I just wanted to update that today. So. And that was it in finance. Great update. Thank you for that. Uh, that brings us to policies for review. Mrs. Morris?
Uh, yes, good evening again. You have before you five policies for review. Uh, the first is job descriptions, then we have administration of medication, reduction in force, extracurricular non-instructional duties, and defensive board members. These are part of your regular review under chapter three, and I can answer any questions on any of them if anyone has any. Thank you.
And then we'll have board comments. I have a comment. It's a little bit long, so bear with me. Um, in the last couple weeks, the staff and the, um, board members have come under a lot of criticism with respect to, to school openings and things like that, and I just want to address a little bit of it. We, all nine members of the Board of Education support students, teachers, teacher assistants, instructional coaches, principals, assistant principals, SROs, nurses, psychologists, mental health and social workers, therapists, custodians, bus drivers, mechanics, maintenance and facility workers, school nutrition workers, front office staff, technology staff, crossing guards, central office staff, and all of our parents. Each of us sitting here on this board have been on a PTO or boo, or booster club as a member or an officer, a coach, a volunteer in our schools, and/or a ru, mom or dad. We support and value our schools. While we do all that we can to support staff, students, parents, and schools, that does not mean that we can make everybody happy. It was an impossible, it was impossible to make everyone happy before the pandemic, and it is even more impossible during this pandemic. You may not agree with our decisions, but I can assure you that UCF's leadership and this board are doing what is in the best interest of our 42,000 students and over 5,000 staff members in 53 different schools. According to multiple news articles on August seventeenth, Governor Cooper and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services strongly considered Plan A, which would completely reopen NC schools with health screenings and other infection control measures. Guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics and other sources focused on the importance of in-person learning on a child's well-being. Governor Cooper and Dr. Cohen discussed Plan A with Dr. Fauci, and two weeks later, on July fourteenth, announced a hybrid plan. Schools would open under Plan B, but schools had to give parents and students an option for full online classes. Governor Cooper and Dr. Cohen announcing that schools would open in Plan B meant that the state determined that opening schools was appropriate and could be done safely if the health and safety program, protocols were followed. Dr. Cohen has said on multiple occasions that schools need to be open. She also added that if schools were open, her own children would attend. We have received many emails and comments that we should just open schools completely, and I want to address our inability to do that at this time. The governor also has a Plan A that would allow schools to completely reopen, but the governor did not choose Plan A. School districts can choose Plan B, but not a less restrictive plan. UCPS is bound by law to follow the governor's and state's health department's requirements. As Ms. Merrill explained at the last board meeting in making a decision to open schools in Plan B, UCPS leadership took into account, among other things, students who do not have access to reliable internet. And yes, there are areas in our county that hotspots do not even work. EC students, students with IEPs and five oh fours, students at risk, and students who have difficulty with online learning. While one, one day may not seem enough right now for some students, that one day gives the teachers the opportunity to see and talk to a student who may be struggling academically or in other areas. One day a week also gives UCPS the opportunity to get students used to the health and safety protocols. We have heard from many teachers, students, and parents who are happy that UCPS offered both Plan B and Plan D. We have heard from some teachers and parents, some of who, who do not work or live in Union County, who want UCPS to go with Plan C, which is all remote learning. We have also heard from many teachers, students, and parents who do not want Plan C but want more in-school days than just one. And we have heard from a large amount of parents who believe that we should be in school five days a week. So simply, it is impossible to sat, satisfy all these conflicting opinions. No pandemic school opening manual exists. So thank you to all the teachers and school staff for all your hard work and dedication the last three weeks. Thank you to Dr. Houlihan and his team for all of the hard work in opening our schools. We truly appreciate you. We are Team UCPS, and working together as a team, we'll get through this with patience and grace. Thank you. Are there any other board comments? Mr. Sides?
Uh, I just, if I hadn't already, wanted to make my, uh, case clear because I guess one looks at the record, I'll go down into no vote against adding an extra day to, um, in-class study. I am, uh, concerned without, as I mentioned, without reviewing actual data that, um, I am concerned that we are, um, putting our intentions, our good intentions into stone without the actual data to back it up. So I want to be very clear, this board has voted to move forward with two days a week, and I will not vote to back up on that. I don't, I'm not, we're going to either find, we're going to find a way to make it work because I am not going to vote, I, I mean, I'm not going to have this board vote two days in-class instruction, and then we have to come back to parents and say, look, we jumped the gun and we can't make it work. I'm not voting for that. I'm sticking to it, so I'm just letting everybody know. I, as I tried to caution, I thought this was a hasty decision other than what the data we had at hand. But the decision's been made by this board, and I will abide by the majority. Believe me, I'm getting used to it because I'm usually on the short, I've been on the short end of the stick enough, but that's the way it is. But I am not then going to reverse, vote to, anyway, the rest, the, the board will have to do what they feel is best when the data is presented. Um, but I personally will not, under any circumstances, vote to, uh, rescind back from, from two days of instruction. So we got to figure out a way to make it work. If we've committed to the parents of UCPS, we're going in for two days of instruction, then that's what we're doing. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sides, and I'll just add that if you were open to four days, then two days will be good. Um, are there any other board comments? Okay, I just, I would like to, um, acknowledge our cabinet staff and directors that are here tonight because, again, um, you know, we thank Dr. Houlihan and our team, um, for the countless hours you're pulling, um, every day for Team UCPS. And, um, if I have to say this every, every day, every month, I, I just, I want each of you to know how much we appreciate what you're doing under these, um, extraordinary circumstances. And the same goes for our teachers, um, our administrators, um, ev- everyone who's employed by Union County Public Schools, we are, we are grateful for each and every one of you. Um, I also want to, um, to recognize, um, Casey Remmer. Um, she has done an absolutely amazing job, um, getting information out, uh, to our teachers who are struggling, our parents who are struggling, our students who are struggling, um, making, you know, um, we have one simple conversation, how about a Facebook Live? And it happens. And so, um, so Casey Remmer, um, please know that this board, um, appreciates you very much, and I would be remiss not to mention, I heard, um, her peer Lisa Thompson, um, who I know has been working behind the scenes, along with many other, um, people in technology, James Parker, you know, thank you to your team and, um, and everything that you're doing to keep, keep those devices, um, repaired and working for, for our students two through 12. I also want to thank Jared McCraw and acknowledge, um, his continued daily, if not hourly, communications with, with the state, following state guidelines for social distancing, working with, um, the Health Department. Every time we get a single person that has tested positive, you are in communication with the county and the state on whether a school needs to be closed or not. These are not, um, loosely decided decisions. It is not a board decision. It is not a staff decision. We work with DHHS to determine, and they determine and recommend if a school needs to be closed or not. So just because there have been nine COVID cases, but only two schools have been closed, I want everyone to understand that that has been made at a much higher level. and a team effort. And so I just want to thank you, Mr. McCraw, for um, for always doing what's best and right and safe for our employees and our students, our families, and our schools. And if someone doesn't understand how that decision was made, please contact Mr. McCraw. If um, if we're just not understanding how these decisions are made because we, we will absolutely share um with, now, we can't violate anyone's, you know, HIPAA rights or um any confidential, employee confidentiality or student confidentiality. But if anyone is confused on why two schools were closed and not nine schools, um, please get in touch because we'll, you know, as best we can, we will communicate how that decision was determined um above us. And other than getting um the playground questions um answered, I think that um concludes my comments for tonight. Okay, hearing no other um board members hitting their mic, I will move to announcements.
Facilities Committee will meet on September 17th, 9:00 AM, PDC. Finance Committee will meet on September 22nd, 9:00 AM, PDC.
The Strategic Planning, Information Technology, and Transportation Committee meeting, also known as SPIT, will meet uh September 23rd, 7:30 here at the PDC.
Curriculum Committee, if needed, will meet last Thursday of the month in this very room at nine o'clock, 9:00 AM.
Policy Committee will meet September 23rd at 9:00 AM here at the PDC. Okay, if there are no other announcements, I will make um a request for a motion to adjourn.
So boom.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.